Great to have you here today and some other folks I think we're gonna get to. Do we need a motion to approve the amendment of the agenda, Commissioner Gold?
My move that we approve the agenda is written.
I'll second that. I think we have a quorum. Do we need a roll call or can we just vote?
It's up to you. You're the chair.
Yeah, voice vote. Is it just for the agenda you can voice vote? Any discussion on the agenda?
No.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. No one opposed. Thank you. So first, on the projects, oh lord, I forgot about this. Ms. Tim Jack, please come up. Lower Rogue Watershed Council, grant presentation.
Yeah, I'll hopefully not try and take up too much of your time today. And honestly, I don't usually come to you guys for grant proposals or information. But since this one is considering a county road culvert, it's an area where we're looking at getting some match from the county. And so, we need to come and talk to you guys about it to see if you would be comfortable doing some match on a grant. So, the one we're looking at and talking about is on Ranch Creek. That is just less than a mile up the Rogue River here, right inside the estuary. If you know where Tidewater gravel is, that's where the creek mouth kind of comes out currently. And then it passes, the culvert road we're talking about is the one that's just past Chris Pash's and Reg Williams' property there. There's a bunch of old cypress trees there and a ranch on that side, on the riverside. So Ranch Creek is really important. It's funny, I came at a fisheries sort of a view, and then Jerry may add anything in, but they're coming in from an infrastructure view, obviously. This is kind of a symbiotic project between the county and the council, where we're looking at getting some ecological goals out of it. And they're also looking at strengthening of the road system and updating that area so that there's not any issues there moving forward. Ranch Creek does have Steelhead, Coho, Cutthroat. And we don't really see Chinook in there. It's a pretty small stream. And now we don't really see Coho spawning in there. We do see Coho juveniles using it. So it's a really important tributary in the lower Rogue. We don't have very many of these nursery juvenile areas in the Rogue estuary. And so Ranch Creek is a really important system to that. Currently, we've done a lot of work in that watershed. We've had a really lot of great landowners on board. And so we've done a couple of large wood projects up there. We've done like four and a half miles of road inventory to look at sediment issues or where there's need for culverts or ditches. We've done six fish passage projects already upstream of the county road culvert. So the fish passage issues have been addressed upstream of the culvert. And the mouth still needs a little bit of work, but we're sort of working on that in the background too. That's a much bigger project. So the last one that we see is this county road culvert. It is a velocity barrier, is what we call it, for the little fish. So once all they want to go is in the wintertime, when the river is super, super high, they want to get off of the main stem river because they can't eat there or rest and grow. So they tend to find these little tributaries or like the slough, like I'd want to slough or Indian Creek, and they'll pull off and relax, if you will, get off the main stem. So this one, they get up to that point and then they can't access anymore. So they basically hit the county road, which is North Bank Rogue River Road. And then they can't really get that much farther if the water's coming through the culvert too fast for them to pass through that much area. So it's quite a length there. And there's like two miles of quality habitat up above that. So we're trying to open it up so that they can access all the rest of that. Basically, if you're aware of it, one of our limiting factors for salmon production in the Rogue are these off-channel areas, these rearing habitats. We do have a lot of area for spawning habitat. We fixed most of our fish passage problems in the county. There's been a lot of work done with that. I was talking with the road department too, and they've worked endlessly on fixing fish passage. So we do have access for that, but we don't have a place for the babies. So we're just trying to work on creating a little more nursery space, if you will, for these little fish because you don't get your big delicious salmon without your, making your babies better first. So that's where it is. And I can walk just real quickly through the budget. It's kind of initial and it can still move around. I think it was included in your packet, but it just shows the budget. It's an expensive project, so it hasn't been a high priority for our council for a long time. But then I met with Richard and Jerry and Gary, and it sounded like there were also some, maybe some infrastructure problems. One of the culverts has already passed its prime. The other one is still functioning. And then this last high water kind of pushed it to the limit. And it's creating some problems for both of the landowners on both sides too, with dredging one side and then backing up on another side. So we talked about addressing it. So you'll see the pink match, that's called an external in-kind. And so basically, a lot of this that you're looking at is people time. So it's people to work and their equipment time. So if I was to contract with anybody, I have to pay them for their equipment and for the people to run the equipment. And so this would be a joint effort where the county would bring their guys and their equipment in to do the project work. And then we would supply, if we were awarded the grant, this is all if, if, if. The actual funds for the materials, the supplies. Hopefully, we could secure some more funds to get some of the rock and crane rentals and, you know, all these sort of things that come with a big project like that. So what we were coming to you today was to see if, I think there's a threshold that they can bless for a certain amount of match from the county. But to see if the commissioners would be supportive to support this grant if it did come through, which means you would dedicate some of this county road time, money, dollars. It's not you actually giving money to us or to the grant, but paying the people to do the work. And so that's how it comes in, is match from the county. So it is a large. It's about 134,000. I met with Jerry and Gary the other day, and we had talked about how I, it was my fault, but I hadn't properly teased out some of the people time out of the materials and supplies. And so I could go after additional grant monies to bring that down. Maybe another 20 to 30, we thought, could be taken out for materials that the county wouldn't host. But anyway, we were hoping that you would at least bless this amount knowing that it could get lower, and I would try to do that. Whereas we would bring in 210,000 to complete the project. So I'll take questions. Sue?
The one question I have is, and then kind of with the road department, would we have to go about doing this culvert anyway? It sounded like it was kind of end of life.
Jerry Storey, County Road Department. Yeah, yeah, the one culvert is past its life cycle. And the other one still has another 15 or 20 years left, but it's taken both pipes. So at some point, we're gonna have to close the road to replace the one.
So does the road department think this is a great idea to do this, win-win type of thing?
It is, in order to make it friendly for fish passage.
Well, we want to have the fish, that's for sure.
Right. Just to replace the pipes the way they are, it probably would cost the road department about the same amount of money that we're looking for the match.
Oh, okay, so it would cost us about 130,000 anyway?
Correct.
But you guys are gonna be doing more with it, so?
Yeah.
Yeah, we propose to open up the stream valley a little bit, a little bit more. Instead of putting in culverts, it's kind of like a open bottom. Basically, it's a bridge in all concept.
It's a precast bridge section is what it is.
Okay. Well, it sounds to me like we'd have to do it anyway, and so it would be better for the fish to do it your way, so?
Right.
Okay.
Right, it would.
You have my blessing, just to let you know. We can't vote today, but?
Well, thank you, Commissioner Gold.
You're welcome.
Mr. Storey, thanks for showing up today. And it sounds like, all of a sudden, we're, not all of a sudden, but there's a better awareness now of the fish. And to hear you mention the Coho aspect, and, you know, just that reminder's really good to know. So thank you again, Ms. Tim Jack, your work on Watershed Council and Forest Collaborative is really impactful and appreciated. So we'll make sure that Commissioner Pash is well-informed. And I can't speak for him, of course, but I know how he feels about salmon trout enhancement, so. And I did not know there was Cutthroat in there. That's amazing. Good job.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
They did it themselves. They're pretty hardy. Well, thank you, Mick.
Yes, they are hardy.
All right. Well, thank you guys for hearing me today. I appreciate that. And I love working on projects with these joint parties so we can all get our work done.
Thanks.
Great work.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. So next we have Oregon Department of Transportation, Highway 101, Huscanaden Slide and Other Updates. Welcome, Mr. Naval. We're glad to have you here.
Darren Naval, District 7 Manager for ODOT. So thanks for having me. When I started, I got an invite for Richard early February, and he asked me just to come down and give you guys a project, or an update on our projects going on in Curry County. And since then, we've had lots of other stuff that I thought we'd share and give you an update on. And so I do have, I didn't put in the packet, but I have a two-pager, just kind of summarizing Huscanaden. And so I can either pass that out or just put it on the table here for later.
We'll take it now, if you don't mind. Thank you. This guy over here needs a copy. Thanks, Darren.
Thanks.
So we'll talk about this in just a minute, but I thought I'd do the project update. All right, so John, do you have that slideshow that you get? It never came? Link never made the link? Do you, could I give you my jump drive?
Yes.
I apologize. I thought.
We're not in any hurry. That'd be great to have that set up. Is it back on the podium?
Oh, wow. A lot of money.
So which one do I click, John?
Double-click that one.
That one?
All right. So thank you for having me today. So just wanted to give you an update on projects first, and then we'll talk about some slides. But this is all the projects from 2019 to '24. The ones as we get farther out are possible ones. We're still working through the process, but that just kind of gives you a snapshot of the different programs and then kind of where they are in Curry County. So we've got three currently in place that are under construction. One is the paving project north of Port Orford, the Childers Road to Garrison Slough. That project is paving and doing some railing on the bridges. And so that work will happen all summer and be done by fall. So we'll have new asphalt up there. It should be a really nice, nice project. Thomas Creek Bridge, I'm sure you guys are ready for that one to be over with.
Yeah, when is that gonna be done?
September. So late September, we'll be done with that.
Actually goes through every day.
Yeah, they've got most of it done, but wrapping up and be done by September. And then the other one, you'll see they'll come in real quick and out, is just some signal upgrades. It's backing plates, making them brighter, some new lights and stuff like that. So you won't see a lot there, but those are the three that we've got in Curry County right now that are active. Approved projects that are coming in the next few years. The first one is taking off from Garrison Slough, the north side of Port Orford, and going through Port Orford. We'll have a paving project. We'll also upgrade ADA ramps, add some rapid flasher crosswalk improvements through town. And so that should be a really nice project. That'll be in '21, '20 and '21. And then Gold Beach Bridge, we've got some strengthening that needs to happen, just to make sure we can get all traffic through there. So in '20, you should see a project. Most of the work will happen underneath, but there will be some lane closures and stuff as that gets developed. Any questions on those two?
If I may, on the Rogue River Bridge, so that's structural work you're gonna be doing under the bridge, kind of like Thomas Creek, huh?
Yeah, the beams and?
And do you know about how long that's gonna take?
It's a year and a half, two years. Yeah.
Okay. Is it one particular end or both ends or?
It's all the way through.
All the way through?
Yeah.
Okay.
They just, they did the, ran the numbers, did some testing, and it's time to kind of strengthen that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, if you're impacting the lights that we put on the bridge?
No, no, it should not.
Write that down.
Yes, I know.
Don't touch the lights.
Yes.
A year and a half though, huh, you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And you'll see another project potentially coming too down the road. The third one that we've got approved is Parkview Drive to Lucky Lane. So that's the north, north end of Brookings. It's gonna add sidewalks on the east side up to Parkview. And so that'll be, and then improve some of the existing sidewalks. They're pretty narrow and not in good shape. And so it'll do a bunch of work. That'll be in '21, '22, those years. And so that'll be a good project as a joint project. The city of Brookings actually applied for enhanced funding and got that a few years ago. So that'll be a nice project through there. And then the last one is our hazard warning signs. So right now, Banden area, Port Orford, actually, Banden area. We have those flashing lights that say, turn to AM channel and get some information. Those are outdated. The technology is going away. It's hard to keep those up and running. So we're gonna end up with VMS boards, variable message signs. And so we're gonna replace those and then also add one northbound going out of Brookings. So trying to warn people of issues along this stretch of road.
That's good. What about high wind warnings? You used to have something in Port Orford south?
We still have that, and that's still active and working. Yep.
Maybe I just didn't notice it.
Yep, have it out of Port Orford and then going northbound just out of Gold Beach.
Sometimes those winds get pretty bad.
Yes, they do. So those are the active projects that we, the approved projects that are in place and will happen over the next two, three years. And then right now, we are, this is our 150% list, what we call. So we go out and scope these, and then at some point, we'll narrow those down to 100% list. So I can't guarantee that all of these will get, well, I know all of these won't get selected. We don't have the funding for all of them, but these are the ones we're considering. And so Morton Creek, Willow Creek, these are just south of Banden area, below Curry, or into Curry County, just a little ways. And those are just railing. They're narrow, small bridges. The railing is bad. And so it's just replacing those. Unnamed Creek in Humbug Canyon, on the south end of Humbug Canyon. We've got a small culvert that's not in great shape and could use some improvements on, fish passage there to kind of improve that area for fish passage. And then US 101 Slide at 316, so this is what we call Woodruff Creek. One of the many through that area that we think we could fix with some funding there. And so that's, that's one we consider. Greg's Creek is down there, just north here by Ofer area. A culvert that's failing, slowly getting bad, and so we need to get that replaced. And then number 12 is a Gold Beach, another work on the bridge. So it's been 20 years, just about. We worked on the cathodic protection of the bridge. And it's time for kind of a relook at that, do some upgrades to that protection to make sure it stays in good place. And so I think that will get funded. We'll see. They might only do, what we're hearing is they might not be able to fund all of it this cycle, but they're considering doing that one. So that's just keeping it in good shape, so. And then number 13 is a paving project through Port Orford, or through Port Orford, sorry, through Gold Beach. So it paved through Gold Beach, and that's one we're considering. And then the last one is Anderson Rock, just south of here, up over Sebastian. Almost every year, we have some rocks in the road, big rockfall area there, and trying to do something there to keep that rock from coming in the road. We had a lane closed last winter for a big slide that came off of that hill. Trying to address that. So these are just projects, again, if you're interested, I can come back once we nail that down to 100% list. That'll happen over the next six months. And so we could share where we land when that's finalized. But wanted to share those. Any questions on projects?
You're doing good.
All right. So let's get to some slides. So in April, we had the slide just south of here, south of Gold Beach. This was, what we learned is, when they built this road, 150,000 yards of material were dumped on this side of the road to build that road. And it was just waste material. And so this got saturated in the April storm and slid out. So you can see all the water. Those are just patches, and the water's just pouring out of those.
So how stable is that road right now? I travel that every day.
So our geologists have been down there looking at it. It's stable.
Okay.
So again, this material was all waste material. It just got saturated, so the road's built on more solid ground.
Good to know.
Yes. The lane, we just took for precautionary reasons. The road, we don't feel concerned there. Just a couple other pictures of it. So project, we're hoping to have the project out to bid next week and start the work sometime in June. And then, so this is kind of some of the work that we'll be doing. It's digging out the remaining material and putting rock. So they'll start, they'll build a road down to the bottom and build it back up with rock. And then also the culvert, we checked it. It's actually not in terrible shape, but we're gonna go ahead and line it just to make sure, since we're in there, to do that. And then reestablish the stream channel as we come back out of there too. There's kind of, there's a stream down there at the bottom where that culvert dumped all the material, or all the water. So complete by August is our goal, and close to a million dollars is our estimate. We'll know in the next few weeks what that, what the cost, the bids are. Yes.
Could you go back a couple of slides to look at that culvert? That just looks really small.
Yeah.
But apparently it's worked.
It's worked, yeah.
That is amazing, because there's a lot of water on the other side.
Yeah. So I don't know, if you've been through there, you'll see a little pump we've had in there for, since it started, and we're pumping it down the road, and so?
Didn't that kind of save us that two or three days following?
It did.
The pump?
Yeah.
Yeah. But you're, in that million dollars, you're not including replacing that culvert or?
We're gonna line it, so.
Not enlarge it?
Not enlarge it.
Okay.
Nope, nope. Our hydraulics have looked at it and they said it's fine.
Sorry for the interruption. Thank you.
No, you're fine. The other thing I didn't put in here, what we're, we'll come back and do. We want, there's a lot of water. You can just see it coming down this road underneath and stuff. And so we're gonna do a cutoff, kind of a cutoff drain each, and try and catch that water and put it into that culvert. And so we'll do that. It might not be till next year before that happens. We'll see.
Yeah, that's getting really close to the road.
Yeah.
I would say about five feet away, if that?
Yeah, it was under 10 last we measured.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. So that'll be, you'll see some work going in, hopefully sometime in June.
Great news.
Huscanaden. So share a few things from that. Day 13 was the day we got the road back open under gravel. Tidewater did an outstanding job for us getting this road open. They, you know, we really didn't get on it until day six because it was moving so much. It started out moving about two, two feet an hour at times, and so we were, we were just, had to monitor it. But Tidewater did a great job getting rock ready as soon as it slowed down. And within six days after they got on it, they had a single lane open for us. And so we got that open March 9th. And then May 6th, we did open it to the two lanes. It is on a speed reduction of 45 miles an hour, and that'll be in place for the rest of the summer. And so hopefully that's functioning okay if you guys have drove through that.
Yeah, it's driving great. I drive every day there, so.
Yeah.
So when we're at SWAC, I ask if you could just leave that slide up for a while so we could just kind of gaze at it.
Right, nice and smooth, yeah.
Two lane.
Just another aerial of getting it paved. One thing we are continuing to work, so on the south end, it's, this is not part of the main slide, but as it pulled down that maiden slide, it pulled a finger, a little slide area. And so this is what they call a soil nail project. And it drives these long rods into the soil. And then they put a, this protective slope on there, and it holds that material back in there. It's not a, it's not a permanent fix. If that slide is way deep, eventually it'll, it'll move and cause this to go away, but it should hold. We've had really good success with this throughout the region. And so they've got about two weeks left, and then they'll be out of there for the summer. The only other project we got, they've gotta put a culvert in there just to get the drainage a little better this summer. So we've got about three weeks total in there. And then probably you'll see us pretty much out of there for the summer unless something changes. So any questions on that part of it, and then I can talk about next steps?
I don't know whether this is on that part, but I'm looking at this thing logically, the old mathematician in me. And so far, since I've been here for the last 30 years, it's usually been Band-Aid fixes.
Yes.
Have you actually looked at all the money that's been spent on these Band-Aid fixes? Because I would think that that would justify a permanent fix.
Yeah, good segue. So let me show, here's just a couple pictures. But here's what we've spent. So we spend about 75,000 annually to Band-Aid it. So that just, you know, it gets rough and we put some asphalt or something. So on our typical years, it's about 75,000 annually. That's when it only moves one to four feet a year. And you guys have seen it. It moves slow. And so we kind of got to Band-Aid that throughout the year.
But it gets really bumpy.
Yes.
To the point of being dangerous, I would say.
Yeah. The other thing we do, we don't always just pave it. I think you've seen where we've come in with our grinder and kind of try and smooth out that, that roughness. And then we've had three major events since we put this road in. '77, '95, and 2019, the last one. And that's where, what we're calling the major events, they've moved, you know, 100 foot to the west and 30 feet down at least. That's, this, this one, from what we've seen in pictures and everything, this one was, was one of the worst movements that we've had. So historically, it does move that 15, every 15 to 20 years, we've had that kind of movement. Total costs, five to seven million. We don't have, we can't find good costs in '95 and '77. But, you know, they were quite a ways back, so dollars today really look different.
Yeah, and it's hard to compare a long time ago because the dollar wasn't?
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
The same value that it is, well, it's valueless today, excuse me.
And then we have had a few other, what we call lesser movements, kind of that six to 10 foot. In 2006 and 2016, we got some federal reimbursement because it moved quite a bit. And we're able normally to keep the road open in those, but it's down to a single lane, under 24-hour flagging, might be under gravel. We had, I know in '06 we did. So you can see what those costs have been through the years.
So do you have a total?
I don't have a total. I haven't figured that out.
That would be a really good thing to know.
Yeah, yeah.
But then you'd have to make an adjustment for inflation to really get the total.
So after this slide this year, we've had lots of questions about and ideas of how to, how to fix this. And so we did some high-level estimates on some different options. And so to mitigate the slide, try and stop it. We're never gonna totally stop it. It's a huge mass that's moving towards the ocean. $302 million. And what that would do is put some big jetty rock down at the ocean. That continues to eat at the toe. That's causing some of the movement. Also, we did this just south of Port Orford, but you drilled huge columns down through the slide all over the place, and you put big rock in there. and you put big rock in there, and you, that holds that slide in place.
How successful has it been south of Port Orford? I've noticed whenever I go north, I don't feel the.
Yeah, we've had one little area in there that moved, we had to go in there and repave it.
Okay.
But overall, it's held up well.
And that's been what, about how many years ago, 10 years?
Yeah, maybe eight, yeah, somewhere in there.
Time flies when you're getting old.
Yeah. So that would be, that's one option. The other one, lots of people thought we just need to bridge the slide. And you could, at 350 million dollars, it'd be a 3,500-foot bridge. And those others are just the different spans. So you'd have a span of 750 and then 2,400 and then 300.
So would that be a permanent fix, do you think?
To span, to miss, yeah. Lots of risk, again, without doing a bunch of drilling to know whether those costs are, you know, we put, we put some risk into that, that estimate. But we'd need to do some real exploring to determine. The concern is where do you put those landing points and can you make those safe and supportive?
Right, that makes sense.
Yeah, and so that's the challenge. But they think they could, without doing a bunch of drilling, they think they could make that work. And then the other option was, so if we can't fix or span the slide, how about upgrading Carpenterville to allow all traffic? So as you guys know, when we detoured, we had to restrict some traffic through Carpenterville Highway. It shut off some operations from the hospital and transit and stuff. And so we looked at that. There's 98 slides up there that we know, and I'm sure we'll find a few more if you got into straightening up things. But to do that's 439 million.
So what would you, I'm looking at this and I'm thinking option number two would be the best.
Yeah, yeah, again, lots of risk in, we'd have to do more exploring if you were ever to consider that. But from a long-term strategy, I mean, that one, if you could find the landings for your vents and columns there to stay, you'd be, you'd be good. Any questions on that?
Let me ask you, go back a couple slides again. Oh, I'm sorry, we're, it compares the different years, they're the three worst years.
Okay.
So you got 1.26 million, it looks like for 40 years, I'm just gonna make a wild guess here, 20 million? So the reality with all the other areas in Oregon, especially on our coast, which we'll be battling and lobbying for, that's not even 10% of what some of the, you know, I can't even believe we'd be talking about a bridge. I think you're responsible to show us what that would be and show the whole world what that might be involved. But a bridge is, to me, when, yes, there's absolutely the inconvenience of the repairs annually, but the money's not gonna be there to have 10 times that amount of project.
And I did throw a slide in just to share a, kind of put it in perspective. So by annually statewide bridge funding to maintain our bridges statewide, $300 million. Our pavement preservation, $300 million statewide. And then recently, we had the House Bill 2017 funding for transportation. The named projects within that 600 million statewide. And so just, it would be a challenge.
Oh boy.
So do you ever get, say, federal grants or something like that to help with funding of a project like this?
Yeah, I mean.
Because we are gonna be, we are gonna be, I live in Brookings, and we will be cut off, we're not even in the emergency plan, we're so cut off.
Yeah, yeah, so we could look for that funding. You know, there's a build project right, or build program right now, I think it's 25 million. So again, I haven't seen any programs out here that have that kind of money at this time.
Well, we just have Mr. DeFazio's person here, and I'm sure she could say, hey, there's 350 million right there. He's over transportation, right? That's what I thought.
So Mr. Naval, real quick here, and just the work you've done over the years, that ODOT has done, you know, get that open six days after, you know, all the aspects of, from the beginning again, the contract and the fighting additional weather, monitoring the movement, trying to make and put the value, every dollar. And not just this year. I just can't express enough how, I just want to say amazed at the work you've done and the partnerships that you've put together through the counties and the other road departments and our elected officials at all levels of government, it's just been, you know, it's still painful to see that and what Brookings went through, as Commissioner Gold said, and the risk down the road. But it is, I think you've done it for low investment and with what you've had to work with. So yeah, to see that two-lane paved and after six days to be there and see the traffic come through and, you know, that day we had the first four cars, we're all from outside of Oregon, by the way. It was a cool, cool moment.
Yeah.
Anyway, thank you.
Yeah, well, appreciate that, and we got a lot of good people to do a lot of hard work, so, yeah, great partners. Just a couple closing things, Tidewater, like we talked about, six days, they got it open. One-on-One was open in 13. The GSI Soil Nails is continuing, and then we'll have that paved stuff through the summer. And then, so this is what we've spent so far as a 520. We do expect it about $4 million by the time we're done. So next steps, we're in the process of designing to get it back to three lanes through that area, do some hillside work, lots of, if you've been, look up there, there's lots of cracks and movement up there. We need to get those sealed so the water next winter doesn't get in those. Also, it really moved the drainage, so right now, there's drainage that moves it kind of around to the both ends of the slide, trying to avoid dumping it right into the slide. When it moved, it took all those out, and so we've got some temporary ones in there, but we need to do a better job. So between now and winter, we're hoping to get up there and rebuild those in place. And our goal is to hope, have that all done by late October of this year. And so I just talked to our project leader, she still says we're on track to get it out to bid to do that, so. Any questions on that part? Okay, and then the last two bullets there. So we are working with transit and businesses and hospitals to see if there's a plan that we can do to help minimize the impacts if we do have that detour in place again. So I'm meeting with Kathy and Transit tomorrow just to talk about options. You know, we talked about, we'll talk about piloting, you know, what can we do? Is there times a day that we can minimize their concerns to get them through there? And so we'll, we'll talk through that, see if there's something we can do. And then we'll do the same thing with hospital and businesses, see if there's something in place. Maybe there's pilot cars that we provide for long trucks. We did do that during the last one we had. So we had fuel trucks that we piloted through there, they were longer than legal, but we got them through there. Also, we had some live fish that couldn't go clear around, needed to get through, and so we were able to pilot them through it at a low, early in the morning. So, you know, better, but I think we could do better, I guess, is what, develop a plan and see if we can minimize that impact. And then the other thing we're doing is currently briefing the Oregon Transportation Commission on what's going on, the costs, the options, share with them what is happening down here. And so they just did a presentation, they've handed out that two-pager to them last week. And so we'll be getting their thoughts over the next month or so. Last slide I got was just to kind of show you, so within District 7 for ODOT is Douglas-Cousen-Curry County. So nine and a half million dollars of federal reimbursement from the storms are coming back to us. That's, that's an estimate. My guess is those costs will be a little higher than that by the time we get done with this. And then these are some local county estimates that they've provided for federal reimbursement. So a lot of these, you guys know, a lot of the counties had a lot more damage than what they could ask for, but this is what they were able to ask for.
I remember you showing this system in Koke Hill, and I had to give the Coos County Commissioners a bad time. I don't know how they aced us out, even if it's only a few thousand, you know?
Right. So that's all I've got unless you guys have got questions for me, or any thoughts or suggestions?
Congrats on your, is it Chris Hunter?
Chris Hunter.
Replaces Mark Hosselman.
Correct.
So send him a welcome from Curry County, bring him down sometime, and it sounds like he has a really impressive resume and I know you're happy to have him on board.
Yeah, he worked for me for nine years, and so he'll do a great job.
Oh, I didn't know, I didn't not read that.
Yeah, he did, he worked for, so he worked with a lot of the communities up and down Curry County, and so they, a lot of them know him. And so, yep, get him down here and meet everybody.
Terrific.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hopefully it won't be another year, but, you know, maybe that's a good sign, right?
Yes, it might be.
Thanks Darren for the great, great work that you've accomplished, all of your team.
Yeah, appreciate the time, you guys, thanks.
The presentation we've been waiting for.
Oh, yes, thank you.
CCO, CEO, excuse me, of Curry Community Health, welcome. Of course, and you know the number? Okay?
Thank you.
Did you need to, did you need to address the board or the community? Thank you very much, Ms. X.
JJ. She was just taking a nap. Is it break time again?
Almost.
Is it called a health break, a safety break? I couldn't remember what the Budget Committee Chair was calling it.
Yes, sir.
The what?
We took a break, he kept calling them like a health.
Environmental.
An environmental.
I won't even go there.
What's that?
You just remain in the educational process for us here.
We were talking about what you called it for a break, an environmental.
Break. Or a comfort break, comfort's even good.
That works.
And don't be hangry.
Well, you always looked at me when you said that.
I was feeding you.
I still haven't figured that out.
I think I might need to make an investment here.
Don't confuse anger with determination and passion, right? I heard that one.
No, hanger.
Huh?
That's hungry and angry at the same time.
Oh, okay, the clarification.
Julie's gonna help you understand that better.
She's trying. Well, those fellows go to staff Jesuit, huh?
Awesome, thank you. I'm pretty sure I can run that. Turkey, turkey, mouse. There was one more on there that I'm not seeing. Yeah, we'll start here. Where's the thing to enlarge it, right here?
Uh, is it not the plus, is it the plus and the minus?
Well, that's only gonna give me the, I think that's only gonna move the one pane, yeah.
Yeah, there you go. No?
There we go. All right, are we prepared?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Kenduké, CEO for Curry Community Health. This is our first quarterly review of public health services. I'm gonna be brief on this so we can get to the more important subject after this. We just did our presentation recently, so we're just calling into attention March and April's numbers. And so the total number of services that we provided in March were 280 and 309 during the month of April. Any questions on those services? I could go through those individually, but I think it's pretty basic information. Okay? I will move along to the next one. Did Dan a drum call in yet?
Is it turned on?
Oh, it's not turned on. So I'm gonna step back for a second.
Hey, do we wanna put that up here so she'll have better, do I dare move it?
Oh, this is the speaker for it.
Do you wanna leave it down there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is the official phone answer?
Yes, all right, let's give her a minute.
Yeah, we're doing fine on time, no worries.
Nothing worse than watching a clock.
I'll give you a phone number if we'd like to dial the phone number.
I'm gonna write it down instead of saying it over the air, just in case.
Good job, counselor.
Thank you.
Got a bunch of prank phone calls.
Yeah.
How many days?
How many days till Christmas, you must know that.
Hello?
Can I try again?
You have a redial function?
With this technology, you betcha, but does John know how to use it? No.
I might back at you. No luck. So she says let's connect later this afternoon, so we're done.
Okay.
He's as impatient as I am, obviously. All right, so we wanted to have a discussion regarding the Curry County Local Public Health Program. Curry Community Health subcontracts with Curry County. We actually provide the program's services, but the county retains the public health authority. I wanna go with the background, and so this is just a few pages, and it's fairly brief. Most of this we know already, but I wanna go through the process again. So we separated on 2-1, 2013, and we had a transfer agreement that was basically our guiding contract. As we rolled into mid-2014, the state of Oregon made it clear that the counties who were subcontracting for those services could no longer give out that public health authority, that the county needed to maintain that public health authority for the purposes of declaring an emergency, for oversight, and for some involvement in the local public health programs. This created many issues for us, and by the time we were sort of dealing with this about a year after we separated, we were already on our fourth revision of the transfer agreement anyway, because there were so many things that were changing. The next impactful change was the state of Oregon requiring all counties that were subcontracting public health services to retain environmental health services funds inside the county. So what that meant is your subcontractor, much like us, could continue to provide those environmental health services out in the field by checking food pool and lodging and doing licensing. by checking food pool and lodging, lodging and doing licensing. However, any fees collected for environmental health have to be deposited with the county. So since that time, we do have that public health account. Now that we have a full-time employee here, which we'll get to in just a second, all of those fees are now being collected by the county instead of being collected by us. This did cause a loss in revenue for our agency of about seventy-five thousand dollars a year in, in funds. Right now, I believe when we went through the budget, there's right around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars just sitting in that public health account, because those funds can only be used for the purposes of environmental health. They cannot be used for other functions or restricted funds. Following the transition of the environmental health services, which I am now abbreviating as EH, the next requirement was to, that each county had to provide their own vital statistics. Again, you weren't allowed to subcontract those services out, and vital statistics is birth records, death records, and things of that nature. So, at this stage, we had to retool the way we were doing business. So we worked with the county so you guys could hire a full-time county employee, and you have one. And that person has been in position for, I don't know, probably over a year, somewhere in that ballpark. And their principal responsibilities are being the vital statistics registrar, which brings in about twenty-four to twenty-eight thousand dollars a year. That's being, you know, that's going directly towards that person's salary. And then they assist with environmental health, so they're able to pull some of those environmental health funds out and get their whole position paid for. So although that employee is a county employee, the county's not using general fund dollars to support that individual. We're only using vital statistics and environmental health funds. The next big change was the state of Oregon eliminated three-party contracts. So it used to be a contract would come out for the state, from the state, for the financing of public health services. And the county would get one, and I would get one, and the county would sign one, and then I would sign it, and then it would go to the state, and they would sign it, and then we'd all get a copy, and they said, no more. So now the county directly contracts with the state, and then we contract directly with the county. And we do not subcontract any of our services out. We provide all services. Part two. Recently, the state has required each county that does subcontracting to develop policies for monitoring the subcontractor. In addition to the monitoring plan, and it needs to be written in the form of a policy, there's also a sub-recipient risk assessment that needs to be done. Both of these are relatively easy things to do, because I believe that we've always had a really good relationship between Curry County and Curry Community Health. There's always been a commissioner on our board. So those commissioners participate in what our financials look like, and goal development, and service development, and hearing all of the things that are happening within our organization. So that's a good thing. We did start a meeting with Louise, our CFO Carol is meeting with Louise. We sent over our last audited financials. We do have our financials audited by an external firm every year. So I think we're pretty much on board with all the things we need to do. Having said that, in a moment, we'll get to the proposed draft policies that we've provided to the county. These required changes have had a significant administrative and financial impact on CCH. Overall, public health is underfunded, and it is becoming increasingly difficult to continue our focus on service. We are administratively overwhelmed, and CCH does not receive any funding for the actual cost of administering these programs. As provided in our most recent presentation at Curry County, public health does not generate sufficient, sufficient revenue to operate, and we, CCH, has been paying for the gap. In two thousand sixteen, seventeen, you can see we had an actual loss, these are audited numbers, of three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. There's some change there, but I'll just stick with the big numbers. In seventeen eighteen, again, an audited, actual loss of three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. We were budgeted at a loss of one ninety-nine for this current year, but in talking with the CFO this morning, it appears we're closer to a three hundred thousand dollar loss yet again this year, which will bring us over a million dollars that CCH has paid for public health. We can't do that anymore. That just cannot happen. So we have three options, in my humble view. Option number one, we, CCH, reverses course, and we move all services, assets, excluding a half million dollars for a two-year period, and personnel to Curry County. All former CCH employees would become Curry County employees. We have to keep, if, if we went with option one, we'd have to keep the nonprofit company open for at least a two-year period. The purpose of that is tail coverage. If there's a bill out there that we owe for somebody who was hospitalized, or there's some sort of a liability for a patient, or a client, or maybe a liability from an employee, you can't just shut down an organization, it doesn't work that way. So we'd have to keep that open for about two years and maintain about a half million in that account. Option number two, Curry County provides financial support for public health each year directly to CCH. The state has previously discussed the potential of providing matched funds to counties, but it'll probably not occur during this next biennium. And option number three, which is the one we certainly don't wanna do, we surrender public health programs to Curry County on June thirtieth, twenty twenty. And then the county would have two options. Start your public health program over, or turn it over to the state. If you exercised, turn it over to the state, and the state were to contact us to be their contractor, I would give them the same response I'm giving Curry County. If you can't provide additional funding and support, then we're not doing it. Because we cannot take a million dollar loss over three years again. We just cannot do it. When public health was still with the county, the average investment by Curry County was a hundred and eighty to two hundred and twenty thousand dollars every year that the county general fund was contributing to public health to keep it flush. Since we left, county has paid zero. And I'm not saying that to make the county feel bad, I'm just stating the facts. And at some point, we have to figure out what the right protocol is here. So we wanted to list all the potential options that I can see right now, which is we come back into the county, or county finds a mechanism to provide financial support, or we have to surrender the program. And I'd like to spend, you know, the next couple of months processing this point, having conversations about what's gonna be in the best interest of the public. Yes, sir?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a, ask a question. So in one, in one option, you said also the state would do something? Is that an option four, or is that option three?
No, that's option three. The county, if, if, if number three was exercised, the county would have two choices essentially.
Yeah.
Okay, we got the public health program back. We're going to hire employees and start it up and
Yeah.
take on that investment, or, no, 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 we're gonna have to give it to the state. We can't do it. Those would be the county's two options. Then the state would have to contract with somebody locally to provide those services, because they're not in a position to do that from Salem. I'm just saying that CCH would not be interested in contracting with anybody.
Unless?
At a million dollar loss every three years. That just doesn't pencil. Yes, Commissioner?
So, what's happening? And this is just my broad view of the whole thing. The state is demanding more and paying less for your services, correct, incorrect?
I've been in Oregon since two thousand and five and find that statement to be correct.
Okay.
Based on my entire history.
Okay, so has this been escalating a little bit at a time, or always been the case?
Well, first you have to ask the bigger question about, because I wanna keep it focused on public health, you know, what happens across the nation? While Oregon is, you know, one of the states that invests the least amount in its public health, about seven percent is what their investment is in the public health funds that get distributed amongst all the counties in the state. And it's significantly low. You know, that doesn't change the fact that there needs to be a public health program, and our citizens go without services if there isn't. It's, it's, uh, I don't believe we're gonna see any additional funds coming in from the state. As a matter of fact, I do believe if they do start the matching program, even though it won't be in this next biennium, two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-one, it's not likely they're gonna do a dollar-for-dollar match. I think if they do a match, it's gonna be on a two-to-one or a three-to-one. You know, for every two or three dollars we invest, they might, they might match a dollar. And there'll be a maximum dollar amount, and it's gonna be based on per capita, which is a bad formula for us, because we have roughly twenty-three thousand people who live in Curry County.
So are, I, I would assume all of the rural counties are being hit hard with this.
So, it's been a little while since I've traveled out to all these lovely meetings, because you have to make some choices. You either stay home and do your work, or you travel and you don't know what's going on at home. And the, and when I was out traveling and doing the meetings, at that time, there were only two counties in the state that were not contributing to public health. The state of Oregon expects that each county will contribute to public health. That's their expectation. I'm not saying that's right, I'm not saying that's wrong. I'm just sharing with you what their sense of that is. I think that they feel that the counties are obligated to support public health, because it's a local program. Although there's some state programs involved in this, and some federal programs, like when we get into WIC and reproductive health, there's still some things that it's a local program, and if you want local control, you usually gotta pay to play.
But you're being mandated to do certain programs, correct?
They've changed that quite a bit. We're down to about ten programs. There are some programs that are elective. And like, there's a couple of programs that we stopped doing, because the grant funds were like five thousand dollars, right? And it costs us fifteen thousand dollars to operate the five thousand dollar grant. By the time you do the reporting mechanisms, they, they, they just don't pencil.
So you're talking like babies first or cocoon?
Babies first, and we could, we have a, you know, again, if we have about twenty-three thousand people, about thirty-five hundred of those are eighteen and under, we don't have that heavy of a youth population here. We can still connect people to all those services, we just don't wanna collect the money, because it's, it's such a small amount that costs our agency a lot to monitor and report.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
I know this, I know I should know the answer to this, but I have to ask. How is what you offer different than what, for example, All Care offers? Is it something that one of these private, or I call them private, CCOs could pick up? Is that right, CCO? Right, the, in All Care or in Advanced Health?
So, the coordinated care organizations, and, and we work with both All Care and Advanced Health. On the public health spectrum, they're not as involved. We do get capitated dollars for them to provide our behavioral health services. We do fee-for-service on our, so there's two funding mechanisms. The capitation is just, here's a whole block amount, provide services to all of our clients. Fee-for-service is client A came in, and this was the bill, and then they pay you whatever that percentage is. So that's their role. They're, they don't provide necessarily direct services. Their goal is to essentially be like a large insurance company that's getting money from the state, and they're passing it down to people that are providing services to OHP folks, folks that are on Oregon Health Plan. And their job is to manage those resources and make sure that those OHP clients are getting the care they need. The, the focus is, let's get our people healthy. Healthy people will cost us all less, it'll be less demand on the tax dollars. Plus, when you start thinking about the value for a family, kids who go to school on a full belly are more likely to engage more in learning, to be more involved in extracurricular, extracurricular activities, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So the CCOs wouldn't be that. If, if we weren't doing this, I guess a third option is you guys could find another contractor to do that in Curry County. But it wouldn't be a CCO. It'd have to be another entity that has the wherewithal to do what we're doing.
Do you wanna finish your program and then we'll interject?
I'm at your
Either way's fine.
Whatever you guys want me to do.
Do you want us to ask questions as we go along, or do you wanna wait?
Certainly, I think that's probably the best way.
Yeah, why it's... Okay, I, I have one question. If we were to, um, do option one, where all moves and services and personnel to Curry County, everything goes to Curry County, and we have all these employees as county employees, would these employees be on the same salary scale, schedule?
No.
Okay, so there might be some problems there.
There would be some problems.
Okay, and then we would be responsible for paying per?
Yes.
Okay, what about possible duplication of services, like legal or accounting or?
So, you know, while we may have a full cadre of staff, they're all busy.
Oh, I'm not saying they're not busy.
And it wouldn't change the dynamic of that, moving back into the county. It wouldn't be a duplication of services. Our attorney is currently spending about seventy-five percent, maybe even a little bit more right now over time, just processing records requests. And I'm quite certain that Mr. Huddle does not have any vacancy in his schedule to deal with records requests. And it's kind of like accounting, our CFO's got a full-time job, just monitoring the raw number of agreements and contracts we deal with, and then making all the reports that have to go out every quarter. So we couldn't lose anybody from our organization, otherwise it ceases to be effective. We're in a medical model, that's how we're operating. And in today's medical world, you're not paid. The, the good news is, is I believe the county is, is now moving into the two thousand pay scale. Of course, this is two thousand nineteen, but two weeks ago, you guys were at the nineteen-eighty pay scale. And I'm just being honest. And there's a big gap there. Our agency has seventy positions. Right now, we have eight openings, and the only reason we have eight openings, because we have three brand-new positions. And then the rest is just sort of turnover. I can't recruit people, I can't hire people at those nineteen-eighty pay levels. We were paying our mental health therapists thirty-eight thousand dollars a year to start. That's somebody with a master's degree. There's no way, and I'm talking when they were with Curry County. That same person today is starting out at fifty-four thousand six hundred. Now, when we send out an advertisement, we get about a dozen applicants, sometimes as many as twenty or thirty, depending on the position. We have to, and we'd have to maintain those rates, because if anything changed at CCH, if we started, if we reduced salaries, we started taking the number of people down, what's gonna happen is our service delivery's gonna be interrupted, and that revenue's gonna cease. And then, we're back to where we used to be. Public health costing the county a hundred and eighty to two hundred and twenty thousand a year, mental health being a potential liability of up to two million a year because of hospitalization costs. Those are big numbers, and the county's been insulated from that for the last five years, or a little bit more than that, but close. And this is our board chair, Mr. Ed Conyers. If you'd like to come up, Ed, come on up, because he's got a talk on the microphone.
Court knows this, he's also a board member, but we had an extensive pay survey done to see where we fit, because of the time, the trouble we were having recruiting people. People don't like to come, it's too wet. We had people come through Mexico, state of the year, and say, man, we're going back to New Mexico, sunshine. But the thing is, in order to recruit people, to keep people, we did this, and we were, we were down below. And that, and that, it told us what we had to do to recruit, recruit the people we need and to keep the people we need. So that's the point he's trying to make, and I just wanna say that. Another thing I wanna say is on this option two, being a math and a, and a science teacher, I can tell you a physical principle that a three-legged stool always finds, each leg always finds a place to be. That's why they make tripods for the surveyors and tripod for telescopes, take pictures. Two, two legs, they don't stand by themselves, one leg's really bad off. So the thing is, if you go that, if we can convince the state to come along with us, and the county, and if we can get enough money from them, then we might be able to make it work. So I think the three-legged stool would probably be the best.
Mr. Conyers? If I may, so just make sure I understand, it would be a state-county CCH match?
Correct.
I think that just sunk in.
But like Ken says, they won't do anything until after this biennium. But if we can work with them, we can work with David, our representative David Smith, and try to work out them to give a reasonable amount, and, and, and whatever the county can afford. I think it's best for the county, obviously, and be, actually best for the state, whether they know it or not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere now.
I don't think there's any easy answers on any of this, other than, um, we are expanding our primary care so- our primary care services. We've hired a family doctor. His name is Galen Whipple. He started with us about a week and a half ago. It's gonna take a little time for him to get through the credentialing process and all the things that are required in order to get somebody out there online with our clients. And our family nurse practitioner is retiring, and so we're hiring another family nurse practitioner, and we're expanding our primary care business. I anticipate we'll pick up anywhere between 500 and 1,000 new patients before the end of the year. That's one of the biggest demands that we have in Curry County right now. Next year, our focus is, we have to get a substance use disorder treatment program up and operating in Brookings. And we have the facility, we have the location, we have the ability. But if I'm spending a million dollars on public health, we can't afford to get that substance treatment center up. And that, to me, is probably one of the biggest priorities in Curry County. As a matter of fact, if you take a look at the CHIP and the CHAW, Community Health Improvement Plan and Community Health Assessment, you'll see lots of communication in there about substance use and the fact that we don't have treatment services here available in Curry County. So, you know, if it weren't for my concerns about trying to do these other things, maybe we wouldn't be here having this discussion today. But we just can't burn through that amount of cash anymore. It's not right. I mean, we subcontracted. I don't mind putting in a little bit of money, but my goal in letting the county know is, there's a huge disparity here. Show me another partner in Curry County that'd be willing to put another, a million dollars out on the line for the citizens. I don't think you'll find it.
Director Schmelzer?
I was just gonna say, I know when I was with a different county, they had looked at following the model that you're currently under, which is separating off from the county. And my understanding was, financially, they just couldn't justify it. I mean, I think it's great that you've made it this far, but I do think we, as a county, have to figure out how we're gonna be able, how we're gonna be able to keep community health. And I think it's gonna take a lot of work to figure that out. What type of timeframe are you looking at? Are you looking at us having just a general direction this summer, and then trying to figure out, I don't know, task force, looking at employees and benefits?
Well, if you know me at all, you know I'm very organized, and I don't always share everything that's on my mind because it's called business. And we do have competitors. I will tell you this much, that the reason I'm bringing this up now is because now's the right time to bring it up, when, you know, we just can't do it. And look, if we had to go into option three, that's June 30th, 2020. That's more than a year away. I'm doing this so we all have time to figure out what's best for the citizens of Curry County. That's really where I'm at. I'm concerned about the amount of time we've spent improving these services and improving the facilities in which these people come in. Returning that to the previous state is not a good idea. I don't think that that's a good fit. Does Curry County want to take public health back on? I don't know. Are you guys ready to spend $180,000 to $220,000 a year? Oh, and by the way, that was five years ago. So that's probably $240,000 to $300,000 now. Because if you take on public health, you have to do certain things. You have to run those required programs. You know, this is the difficult part. It's not an easy thing to do. Option number two seems to be the best to me, and I might give some suggestions. I mean, first of all, I want to say, good job on getting the TLT tax passed, right? That's what I understand.
Yes.
So what happens in the summer in Curry County? What happens to our population base?
Probably doubles or triples.
Yes. So I know that on the TLT, a certain percentage of that has to be used for tourism dollars. Is there any way to connect those? That high influx of tourists that come in during the summer, and our services increase in the summer when these folks come in. We find ourselves doing more immunizations. We find folks coming in because they don't have anywhere else to go because they're from Montana or they're from Alabama. And so they don't go to the hospital or the ER. They're just looking for somewhere to go to get a service. So I don't know if that connection could be made, because that wouldn't be like going to the general fund and trying to free up monies.
So a lot of them go into urgent care right now? I would think.
Well, urgent care's in Brookings. I get people that stop in our clinic all the time asking where they can get a service.
Okay.
Doesn't help people up in Port Orford. And I live up in North County.
Okay, so I'm thinking the Brookings?
Right.
Facility.
I think Brookings has its fair share of providers. A general way of looking at this is, for every 1,000 people that live in your county, you should have one family care physician for every 1,000 people.
I don't think that's happening.
No, not even close. And so I think there's some funding things. We're not asking the county to make up the difference. We're asking the county to make a contribution. I think if the county made a contribution, and we don't mind making a contribution, but we don't want to fight the battle on our own anymore. That's just not fair. It's not that, that's not what we signed on for. And if, we didn't change the rules, right? County didn't change the rules. State certainly changed the rules. But there is that expectation that counties have an obligation to support their citizens, and especially on the public health front. So I don't know what the answer is. But I would say by September 1st, we need to have it figured out. Because whatever choice we enact, starting in September, gives everybody plenty of time to get to the end of whatever option we choose to go. And it's not a big rush. The worst thing in the world to do would be me to come in and do like a 90-day notice. That would be horrible. And that's not the way we do business.
So what option are you suggesting, one?
Say that one more time.
What option are you suggesting?
I'm gonna stay out of it. We have a board of commissioners, and I have a board of directors. And I think that those two entities need to make that decision. My job is to give the best factual information I can give. And I'm hoping that after this delivery, people have time to come up with some questions. We can meet again, perhaps in another three to four weeks. We can take those questions in. I can provide information. We can meet again, another three or four weeks after that. And then we should be able to come to a mutual decision, I'm hoping, between the board of commissioners and my board of directors, about what the appropriate thing to do is.
Are these options in your handout?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm looking. Okay, I'm seeing. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Oh, yeah. We didn't have an official vote, but we did sort of have a vote. And I can tell you, all the board members, except for one, maybe, were against option one.
So they were leaning towards two?
Two, correct. That's why I talked about two.
Okay. And I think that's important to know. Were there any reasons why you were going for option two? Can you kind of fill us in on that?
I can help with that. It is clear that the current board of county commissioners, we don't see any problem with that. But we do recognize that there is an election coming up. And in, you know, January of 2021, there could be two new commissioners sitting in here. And those two new commissioners could change things greatly, because now they're gonna have the voting capacity. They're gonna be able to pass a two-one. So what if we have our nice building over there in Fifth Street on Brookings, and it's all service-related? And patients love coming there. It's clean. It's an appropriate medical environment. And let's say a new commissioner from Brookings gets elected, and they go, "You know, I don't want to go up to Gold Beach every day. We've got this nice office over here in Brookings." They walk in, and they go, "You know what? That was a conference room, but that's my office." What can we say about that? Nothing. If we have our accounts, and we've got $2 million in the accounts because we're trying to reserve money for hospitalization costs, and the board of commissioners decides they want to go in and take a million dollars and repay road funds, what can I say about that? Absolutely nothing. That's the biggest risk. That's the biggest concern. We've worked our tails off for five years. We passed our state public health triennial review in 2015. We just finished off our behavioral health triennial review with the state, and we passed that in substantial compliance. Our behavioral health program is also checked by All Care just recently. We passed that with substantial compliance. Last year, Advanced Health came out and checked. We passed that. We've passed every audit, every inspection. We provide services to all the clients. We've worked our tails off for five years. The last thing we want to do is see a slip and slide on services. That's not gonna be good for the citizens. We've worked hard to bring down some of those addictive behaviors and continue to work with those folks. We're really struggling to get people to make healthy choices. We're trying to provide as many services as we can. It would be horrible to our citizens to take that step back. Again, just as a reminder, in 2012, there were 6,000 mental health, behavioral health services provided. 6,000 compared to the nearly 22,000 we did in the last year. So that's why we're concerned. Yes, true.
Ken, do you have a figure or a formula that if the county pursued option two with you, what that dollar amount would be, or how that percentage would be calculated?
There's not. I think at this stage, it's, let's have a good conversation about it and see how people feel about this. I know where the county's at from a budget perspective. I think all of you know that. And I have no interest in making life difficult for the county at all. But I'm sure you can see what my concerns are. We've got an organization with 70 people, 62 currently, as we have those eight openings I talked about earlier. But, you know, I don't want to see those people injured. I don't want to see the, you know, we've brought people in from all over the place. And, look, if the county could be in a position to contribute some money, and I don't know what that number is today, I think we might be able to go, "You know what? Let's do this for another year, and let's see how this works for both of us." I think it's really good to get the county involved in this, because it's gonna show the state that the county really is involved in this, and we're trying to solve the problem. Not so that the county and CCH can feel better about it, but we're trying to make sure that our citizens are getting the services that they deserve, that they should get. Yes, Commissioner?
So I'm looking at option two, and I want to get this clear in my mind. That would mean that the county would just contribute money to your organization, and your organization would still be a 501(c)(3)?
Correct.
Keeping their autonomy as far as employees and so forth, salary schedules, all of that?
Correct.
Okay. We just need to know how much.
I'd like to give you a number, but I don't think that that would be good to do at today's meeting. I would really like to hear some feedback from the county on that.
One thing you need to know, the reason myself and the board were against, number one, each time we have a board meeting, I've been associated with a lot of organizations, and Ken will say that he and his staff are absolutely outstanding. Very, very professional. The reports are very professional. It's just so, I'm so impressed that, I mean, I would hate to mess up a wonderful thing. You know, I just can't say enough. It's from the bottom of my heart, they're just outstanding. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you. So are we ready to move on to the next topic?
Up to you. It's going well.
Thank you.
That's it.
I did some different slides this time. I had to get off the beach.
What is the significance of the downhill skis there? I see the wheels turning.
I love outdoor activities. I'm old. I can't do as much as I used to do. But I skied. I certainly do that. Yeah. Get over here to this next one. So we did provide you with a draft policy for monitoring. So again, the state of Oregon, Oregon Health Authority Public Health, is gonna be coming out in the month of June and doing their triennial review of the Curry County local public health programs. So they'll be out. And one of the things they're gonna be doing is asking about the monitoring plan. So Ben put together the monitoring plan policy. It's already on the Curry County forms. And so if you could, I don't want to go through all this right now, because we'll be here all day, and that's, we don't need to do that. If you could go through these and have some people approve these, or make modifications, or whatever needs to be done, the idea would be to have these approved as policies before the state comes out here to do their triennial. It's not gonna reflect on the grade that we get as the program provider. It will reflect on the county if they don't have the sub-recipient monitoring plan in place. And again, we're so far down the road compared to other folks that are like us, because we've had a commissioner on our board the whole time. And we've had good, we have good relationships here at the county. We're always in contact with the finance department here. So please read through these. You know, where the language principal investigator came in, you know, Ben and I talked about that this morning, and I think that falls into what the county commissioner does. It's on our board currently. But if you feel differently about it, please look through this and make recommendations to us. And we'll change them and get them back to you so that you have policies that are complete. Yes.
So when is the state coming to evaluate you?
Starting in June.
Okay.
We'll be here most of the month.
Okay, so this would, well, college you with, it needs to be done like today, huh? Because this is the end of May. Our next meeting would be June 5th, I think.
Even if it took a week or two into June, just knowing that we had draft policies and you guys were looking at them, we're still like miles ahead of it. They're excited, actually. Because this has been a big problem in every triennial they're doing. Douglas County just went through some grief on this. So, can you, and you have Ben. So Ben is that .75 CCH, .25 county employee. So I don't know who's gonna approve the policies or what process you're gonna utilize on that. But Ben is certainly available to whoever needs him to be able to respond to these. And then the second document is the risk analysis tool. We know that if we did this ourselves, actually, we did do this ourselves, and we are a low-risk, how did I do that? Ah, yes, thank you. But there's this, and this is a form that we got from the state. Is that correct? So we did this, and we know that we're low-risk. But really, who needs to do it is the county needs to do this. And we'll make whatever administrative staff available whenever you need them to answer any questions that you may have, to aid you in actually filling out this process. It looks daunting, but it actually only takes about 35 to 45 minutes. Is that right, Ben? Yeah, they're not real difficult. So we're doing our part to try to get everything to Curry County. Sorry about the timing. I wish we could've got it to you a month ago. But sometimes, that's just the way it goes. And...
Have we had to, Ken, have we had to do these policies and these assessments every year, or is this the first year?
No, this is all brand-new. They just came out about three months ago.
So is each commissioner supposed to go through here and rate all of this, or...
I would make a recommendation that the board of commissioners would appoint people to do this, rather than the board of commissioners or a commissioner to do it by themselves. Ideally, since Court Voice is already on our board, it would make sense for him to work with whatever person is going to be involved in that, whether that would be Julie or John, your legal counsel, or whoever that might be.
And this needs to be done by when?
I think if we had it done by the middle of June, and the county adopted those policies, then we would be fine. And it's not we necessarily, it's just that the state's coming out for that review, and that they're gonna be looking for that piece from you. From us, they're gonna come say, "All right, let's go take a look at your freezer and refrigerator and see if they're at the right temperature. Let's go over to your environmental health program and see if they have the records on XYZ. Let's go over here to your WIC program and see what your percentage of services are, and making sure that everybody got their vouchers." So we have, like, those program things we're doing. But they're gonna come to the county, and the first thing they're gonna probably say, I would imagine, is gonna be, "Where's your subcontractor monitoring plan?"
Well, we will accept that challenge. You said the middle of June. So that's better than just two weeks or one week.
Yes, and we're available to assist, however that may be.
Okay.
If you just contact Ben or myself, we will get you all the resources and people you need to answer the questions.
Mr. Duque, to the extent you can discuss, you mentioned a minute ago... Mr. DuCave, to the extent you can discuss, you mentioned a minute ago about the grief from Douglas County. Can you give us some heads up on that or maybe another time or what?
Actually, Mr. Cannon.
That'd be very helpful. I'm not aware of that.
So, I, I work with Douglas County Public Health Administrator and Medical Officer, Dr. Danenhofer. And, and they went through this process last year and they did not have a subcontractor monitoring policy or plan in place. And so, the, the commissioners felt like they didn't have the capacity to undertake that type of activity. And so, there was a lot of negotiating that went around about how they would accomplish that. And in speaking with Dr. Danenhofer, he said ultimately, the solution was very simple. It was make sure you have this policy in place, that you have, you know, a portion of staff that's a point person. So, in our case, we have a county commissioner on our board of, board of directors at CCH. And these are kind of the activities and the things that we need to have in place. But at the moment, the, the board of commissioners in Douglas County were concerned about the, the amount of work that they would have to do. But in actuality, it was a simple fix, having that policy and making sure that there was oversight undertaken.
Very helpful.
Kind of explain how some may be failing their triangles as a result of this.
The, the issue there is that the, the county ultimately has that local public health authority and making sure that those, that scope of work. So, talking, Ken was talking about making sure that the WIC program is doing the, the right services, the amount of services, the environmental health, it has records and they're keeping all of those things. Having that report from the subcontractor to the county to ensure that they are in fact doing the, the correct work that OHA is requiring. That's where the, the failing was happening on, on that is that the county didn't have that oversight. And, but there could be potential for, for lack of a better term, abuse of those funds. Using the funds for non-approved services or using them in a, in a way that's not appropriate for that program.
Thank you.
Anything else, commissioners?
So, since Commissioner Boyce is your, on your board, he would be in charge of making sure this gets done. Is that correct?
I, I would have to leave that up to the board of commissioners.
Okay, well, I just, if I've got an assignment, I need to know.
Before they have me to take charge, just let me know when you're ready. I just need the three commissioners to tell me.
Just want to make sure it gets done.
I think it makes the most sense because of the three commissioners. Court certainly knows what we do.
Well, he's been involved.
He's gone to a lot of the meetings. He's been involved in the process. And so, I think that's sort of a natural, easy transition to make.
You can put your phone on speed dial, my friend.
Anything further?
Nope.
Thank you. I'll reach out to you in a couple of weeks and see about setting up another appointment where we can have another discussion and see if we have any additional information.
As board chair, I'd like to thank you on behalf of the board for allowing us time and listening to us. As my dad said, you always learn more listening than talking. That's why you have two ears and one mouth.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you all for the support today.
What you looking for?
Oh, I see.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. I'm not touching that gavel. Thank you all.